Thank you Charlie, I'm Christopher Morgan, City of Charleston Planning Manager. And we've got a number of our department staff that are here today. We've all been working with the development team a good bit on this project. And I'd just like to say a couple of things that, you know, this has been an extraordinary journey up till now with this development team. And we feel like what we're seeing here has been for a private sector site, the best urban design ever we've seen in the city in decades. And we've got a product here that's going to be really interesting for you all to see and really hopefully lends into a city while creating a dynamic redevelopment in this area of the city. But with that, I'd like to introduce Ron Owens with Evening Post Industries to bring in the rest of the team.
Thank you Christopher. Well, I told Christopher we were going to have the meeting in the warehouse a few weeks ago or about a month ago and I told him it was going to be a lot cooler, so I'm sorry about that. I was a couple of days early with my weather prediction, so thank you for bearing with us and we're excited to bring this project here. My name is Ron Owens. I'm the CEO of Evening Post Industries, the owner of the property that we're going to be discussing today. I'm fortunate to work for a family that's passionate about Charleston and committed to the world-class design principles. Our company's operated in Charleston since 1894 and has owned this property since the 1950s, so we have a long history here. Many peers in the newspaper industry have sold out or merged with national operations and sold off in their urban locations to other developers. Our owners are not like that. They're committed to the community and supporting the paper, keeping it locally owned. So we're fortunate to work with a group like that and to really go through this planning process that Christopher mentioned. It's quite extensive and to have an owner committed like that is important. You know, we are looking at Courier Square not just as a project but as a legacy, our legacy in Charleston, so this is very important to us. We actively participated in the design process and bringing together the Charleston community. EPIs accomplished this by partnering with East West and you'll hear from Miller in a few minutes to bring our plans to light. We selected East West because they understand Charleston and share our vision for building a gathering place that the entire community can embrace. We really appreciate East West's community-led approach to planning and design and the quality of the projects that they've developed here in Charleston and throughout the country. Together, we formed a strong team including Satiel and Satiel and you'll hear from Christian later, Design Works, LS3P and Hart Howerton, a world-class team that shares our vision of doing the best project for Charleston. We've been working on these ideas here for over a decade, but really intensely over the last year and a half. It's taken a long time to really see what we worked on here and to bring it together. And that time, we took that time to listen to the community and to get input from our neighbors and historic Charleston preservation and the city's planning staff and I think you'll see the results of their input today in our plans. We focused on a design that we thought would be a vibrant hub that the community will embrace, a plan that sets a precedence for accomplishing high-quality urban design and public open space along with creating creative solutions for affordable housing with the Star Gospel mission. We've supported the Star Gospel mission for 75-plus years and you'll hear from Marion Platt a little bit later, but he can tell you our long history with that operation. But with that, I'd like to turn it over to Miller and the rest of the team and we're excited about what we're presenting today.
Thank you Ron. Thank you Planning Commission, thank you all for taking the time, for coming out here and giving us this special opportunity to talk to you all. I'm Miller Harper, I work with East West Partners, I'm the manager of our office here in Charleston. And East West Partners was started in 1986 by a South Carolina native named Harry Frampton. This picture is Beaver Creek, Colorado, this is one of our first projects, which was a resort community up in the mountains of Colorado. From there, we've kind of grown into seven different markets around the country and developed about $7 billion worth of real estate. In 2000, we moved to Charleston. So this is One Vendu Range, which was our first project in Charleston, which we worked on with the City of Charleston where they built a waterfront park and we built the art gallery and buildings behind it. We now have 18 people working on our team here in Charleston. We like to think of ourselves as market specialists, not product specialists, so we're really trying to move into a community and do what we think is right and great in that community, not just focusing on one specific type of piece of real estate, but all of it. And that really starts with our mission statement, which is to create terrific places that bring people together through meaningful experiences. This is one of our more recent projects, this is over at Daniel Island, this is called the Waterfront. This is kind of an agricultural field, it was the last project built, really one of the last projects built at Daniel Island. And now it's an incredible gathering place. If you go out there today, you'll see people walking the trails, playing in the park, having a nice meal and listening to music, or a place to call home. And we also like to work on projects that are, you know, already here. This is a community that we worked hard to bring back. This building was built in 1872 by one of the, you know, more famous architects in Charleston, John Henry Devereaux. It was boarded up and kind of forgotten about for decades. We're nearing completion of a, probably the most complicated project I've worked on in my career, but we're getting close and should be delivering units by the end of this year, beginning of next year. So this here today, we're really here to talk about where you're sitting today. This is Courier Square and this is the old, obviously the old newspaper building is right at the front door of Lower King Street and it's an incredibly important site. It's 3.7 acres, it's got King Street on one side and Low Line on the other side and it was clear to us that something significant, important and exciting needed to be done here. We saw this as kind of a once-in-a-generation opportunity. Our vision for this piece of property has been to create an intentional public experience, open to the community through a rich mixed use. And we hope to do that through a significant public realm and open space, multiple buildings with varying scales and design, affordable housing and attainable retail. James Wilson can talk a little bit about that, but we come up, you know, we're, we think of seating, the mixed-use-to WH requirements for workforce housing and a really creative partnership with Star Gospel and hopefully incorporating attainable retail and onsite affordable housing through our project. All of that to create the living room of Upper King Street. Our goal here when we started out was to create these, you know, these dynamic principles and then that's when we hired Satiel and Satiel, Hart Howerton, Seaman and Whitesides, LS3P and Design Works. And over the last 18 months, we've met with over 70 different community members, that's, you know, city council members, historic foundation preservation constituents, neighborhoods, every neighborhood in this general vicinity to all ask them, what do those principles mean to them? And what we heard is what you'll see in Christian's, in his plan. We really started that effort prior to picking up pencils, which was really important for us. Now I'm going to turn it over to Christian, who's going to talk you through the plan.
All right. Good afternoon. My name is Christian Satiel, I'm an architect, an urban designer and a historic preservationist. I do practice in Savannah, it's an absolute privilege to have the opportunity from time to time to learn from Charleston and get to do work here in Charleston. I also teach at the Savannah College of Art and Design, so I feel like coming to Charleston is a lesson in itself every time we're here. But as Miller and Ron said, they've invited us in to become a part of working with the community to think about the future of this very important site. What I want to do this afternoon is share where we've been over the last year and a The keynote moment, we began a year and a half ago, but about six months ago now, it was early March, we held a week-long public design charrette here in Charleston. And we bring our entire studio and all the professionals that are working on it together and we call it "Design in the Sunshine." We design in public. This isn't one of these things where we're all working in our office and then we're bringing the work to share, we're working on it with the community. We spent a week in an old bank building down on Bay Street where we set up our studio and had a number of large open house meetings and smaller technical meetings, meetings with neighborhood leaders and preservation leaders, meetings with city staff across all many departments here in Charleston. So it's a very, very meaningful week and we prepare for those kinds of projects by doing the historical research first to sort of understand how, and how the city grew and how it changed, because we are all acting in time and there will be, the city will be here long after we're all gone, so we have to sort of place ourselves in that. I will say this and as you know, you are on the site, which is extremely exciting to me, to be standing in the very site that we're talking about, but this is a little zoom in on the map here, if you can see that. We, the block that we're in between King Street and the future Low Line, Line Street and Columbus Street, really sits between two very different contexts. We have 500 feet of frontage on King Street, Charleston's finest street, and 500 feet of frontage on an old industrial rail corridor that promises to be a new public space for Charleston in the future. So from an urban designer's point of view, this is, this is as good as it gets, to be able to talk about and think about planning in a place like that. And we looked at that, those historical maps, but also the dedicated planning work that has gone on in Charleston over 25 years now. It brought us back to the old downtown plan that was done in 1999. And one of the first times, I think, that this diagram was drawn so clearly that shows how on the peninsula, the King and the Meeting Street corridor really is the spine. It's the spine that unites all the neighborhoods and connects them and it's the high land, it's the crest of the peninsula. And I think that diagram really has informed every planning decision since then and it's truly based on the DNA of the peninsula. Important diagrams were drawn during that plan that reminded us that Charleston's tallest building should be in the center, not on the edges, so you don't have a camel, but you have a city that rises to the center. So we studied those maps and we studied those recent plans. We also recognized that we're working with a community partner here, really an institution in Charleston with Post and Courier, and I think that's extremely important. You know, the people build cities. People build cities and people that are recognizable and have histories build the best cities. So it goes without saying that it's an honor to be working with a Charleston institution on this very important project. And this project didn't just begin 18 months ago, it began 12 years ago, as many of you know. The holdings of the old, the industrial holdings of the printing operations up here represent in total 12 acres, 12 acres of land on Upper King Street. And so we have 12 acres and 12 years of work that's going on just to get to where we are today, but as many of you know, this is too much to do all at once. And so it's been done in phases. In the first phase, which is now finished, just behind us, what we call Phase 1, is where you see this, the new building, the guild, and then the Gray Star office headquarters on Meeting Street, that's Phase 1. Phase 2, across the street in the other direction, heading back between King Street and into St. Philip Street toward Cannonboro, Elliottboro. And so Phase 3 is right here in the middle. But I want to put this up because I, what we realized is over, over these 12 years of work that have gone on here that have led to this planning process, commitments were actually made early and I think it's important, it's important that the guild as a, as a new building, 12 years ago, when the Low Line was still very much, you know, a future, future project, took the commitment to front this Low Line. This is that frontage along the old rail line and in fact, put one of its finest elements facing that space, the clock tower, which has become a local landmark of its own. So I think that's very meaningful. So we've sort of added it all up. This is looking down above, here's the spine of King Street, here's the Low Line. And if you look at Phase 1 here and Phase 2 here, you can see Phase 3 is right in the middle. So we're sort of working to the middle with the planning process. And it is a city with a spine and just like all good spines have vertebrae on them, and if we think about the whole diagram of the peninsula from, really from, from the crosstown or Line Street south, you know, you have, as we know well, that first fold in King Street down at Charleston Place. And as you head north, you have Marion Square as another one of those public spaces that helped create a gathering place for Charleston. And then as we head north, we realize this is the opportunity. This is the civic opportunity that we have now in this time, this generation, to, through an act of will, create a new public space, a new episode along that spine, a new vertebrae along that spine. So that's really the opportunity here. That is the civic opportunity. And we took that very seriously and we're very excited about having a chance to talk about making more public space. Now, it goes without question that this ties very directly to the work that's going on with the Low Line, the 1.7 miles from Mount Pleasant Street all the way down to Marion Square. And working with Scott Parker and Design Works and leaders of the Low Line initiatives, we very strongly believe in this as probably one of the most important new public connecting links that can be created at this time in history and we know that our site is adjacent to them. So we endeavor to start this planning process by really taking a look at what's here now and what has, maybe what is not here yet but has been designed and approved. So we drew maps of everything, sort of the map of the world. And you can see here, this is King Street and that's Line Street and there's Columbus Street and here's the Low Line. This, as you can see, that is the site that we're working on, 3.7 acres. 3.7 acres with 500 feet of frontage on King Street and 500 feet of frontage on the future Low Line. This is Phase 1 with the guild, the clock tower is here. And then Phase 2, which is a combination of residential buildings, the peninsula and then additional residential buildings that are being developed by Gray Star. So we know a lot about the edges and the question is now, as we work to the middle, how do we think about that? These are the lifestyle, community projects that are under construction now, some of them under construction, some not yet, along Line Street. So this is a map of the present and the future, with this being the big question mark. So spent a lot of time, not just drawing maps, which we love to do, probably more than we should, but we love drawing maps, but we also spent a lot of time in the field, walking the site, making observations, certainly, you know, thinking about that clock tower and here's Robert in our office pulling a, pulling a string line across the, across the rail corridor, so we knew exactly where the center was and what that looked like. And, you know, we went high and low, we took our life in our hands and climbed up the crosstown and took a look at what we see because that is a community vista. That is something we, you know, as motorists, you know, that's part of the skyline, it's something we need to understand, so we did that. Probably morning rush hour wasn't the smartest time to do that, but we survived. And we made lots of notes and we marked our maps up to really try to understand the experiences that surround the whole site. One observation, and if you parked out on King Street this afternoon, you probably noticed that it's, it is, this is not one of the finest blocks of King Street today. It is, it's a narrow part of King Street, it has narrow sidewalks and it has industrial curb cuts. And what we began to do was ask, what if we can push that right of way back? What if we can move the building line back and widen the sidewalks and create, you know, proper urban street with on-street parking on both sides? So we pulled our tapes and we sort of looked at those visual conditions to see how that would work. Yeah, that's what you see today. Not a model. And then this is looking up the Low Line here, looking down the Low Line, looking at the clock tower. So the charrette was a chance to take all that preliminary analysis and bring it forward. So we didn't just go in with a blank piece of paper and say, "We don't know anything about it." We've, we've been looking at it hard, but we haven't designed anything yet. We haven't designed anything yet. And we wanted to do that design work in public with all the community constituents that could join us to be a part of that. And so that's how we began. We do a lot of this work by hand, so it's, you can, we call it draw and discard. If it's a bad idea, you throw it out and you try another one. But it was a great chance, we always find the best ideas come out when we work together in a community format. So we had open houses, we were in an old bank, which ended up working very nicely and you can see one of our designers is here drawing away at his drawing board while, while we're having a meeting. But it was a great process. We actually had an open house one night and there were, there were a few drinks at the bar, which was actually the teller booth of the old bank, which was great. We had comment cards, those were the deposit slips and you'd get, and you'd get a withdrawal. So it was, it was a great week, we had a lot of fun, but we also came away with some really powerful ideas. And here's one, one thing that we stated early that we really believe is our highest goal in any kind of town planning, which is thinking of a city as a work of art. And it actually relates to something that Mayor Riley had said to me years, years ago. He said, "You know, Charleston is like a fine painting and when we make a new building, we're adding brush strokes to that painting and when we're finished, it better be better than when we started, it better be more beautiful." So we really got to thinking about, at the highest goal, can the city be a work of art? And certainly Charleston, you know, is abundant with those compositional moments, whether it's looking up Church Street or Broad Street or St. Michael's or looking up King Street toward Francis Marion, that whoever draws them, you know where you are, you know you're in Charleston, because the composition is Charleston. And so as we set out to add something to this canvas of the city, what, you know, what hasn't been designed yet? Could we think of this project as a work of art? And we have elements in place already, certainly the clock tower is an element that has, has a framework that we can work from. And we, so we really, we spent a lot of time at the charrette thinking about how to think about composition, which means an active skyline and a really meaningful street experience as well. So these are some of the sketches from that process and some of those high, those ideals. Probably above all, that the solution must be civic. This is a civic opportunity here. Engaging a range of scales, enhancing vistas, the solution must be a work of art. Using quality and timeless materials, materials that get better with time, being humane in everything that we do and certainly being of Charleston, relating to all of our frontages, beautifying the skyline and rewarding the street experience. All of these are kind of the commandments of, are the principles behind this, the work. So the first mission, the biggest mission was finding the square in Courier Square. In fact, it's interesting, going back 12 years ago, this whole redevelopment effort has carried the title of Courier Square. Where is it? So that's what we set out to find with the charrette. And we went through, I think about 35 iterations of where it might be until, and then when we found it, we couldn't forget it. And then we knew we had really found it. It took us about two or three days into the charrette before we really figured it out. And this is, this is really how it works kind of in a nutshell. When we look at the block, what we, what we realized was that Courier Square was actually on the Low Line. It was a living room on the Low Line, sort of locked in to what was there and then it allowed us to connect up to King Street. And as we studied the plan, this was one of the very first drawings where we, where we found Courier Square along the Low Line with the clock tower in it and then connecting links up to King Street. That was an exciting moment. It was a late, late night discovery and then when we saw it, we said, "That's the answer." So here's the diagram of the Low Line, all of it, but if we look at, kind of zoom in on the core, this is what is referred to as the urban core of the Low Line, everything south of Line Street. And, you know, Marion Square of course is the origin point and then the Low Line moves up into Courier Square and then on up into the neighborhoods. And so in that sense, it becomes that next vertebrae on the spine, or maybe a better analogy is a living room. If you think of a house as hallways that lead to rooms, well, a corridor, the Low Line is really essentially a corridor that leads to rooms. And so that's really how we've been thinking about it. So we went back to our maps and started to make definitive statements and placements for, for that public space. So this is our project, you know, at, kind of at its core, it's a big block, it's a big urban block in, you know, on an important street. 3.7 acres of, you know, of land. But if we start with this goal of creating a new public realm, a new public space, this, this is what happens. So here you can see Courier Square is placed into that environment as a, as a room along the Low Line. And then that becomes kind of a linking point that takes us up to King Street through a series of other smaller rooms and passages and spaces that connect that, so that King Street can be restored and revitalized, but then also connect down to Courier Square. If we start with the public realm first, what, what ends up happening is the private side of this equation, the building blocks actually get broken down organically. And that's something that we, you know, we struggle with a lot in new development, that it's, you know, it's often overscaled or a building is as big as the block was, that's sort of the default. We were looking for meaningful ways to create a small, medium, large approach to this. And so by putting in that public realm, what immediately happens is we have small pieces like, you know, a pavilion in Courier Square or what we're calling a jewel box up on King Street. We have medium pieces and we have larger pieces too. So there's an organic sort of separation of scales and sizes that create a total master plan, that's framed around public space. And this is that plan. This is the conceptual plan for Courier Square. This is what we came out of the design charrette with back in March and we have been working very diligently to analyze and study and find ways to bring this plan to life. So, so at an urban design level, I'm going to orient you to some of those key elements. This is Courier Square, the clock tower as a civic element in Courier Square, and then the Low Line coming in and out of that space. And then our passages through the block. And this is what, a small building that we're referring to as a jewel box to kind of invite you into the block if you're walking up and down King Street. We've also, as you can see, we've also pulled the buildings back with the, with the intention of then dedicating right of way back to make King Street the proper width for, you know, one of the finer blocks of King Street where you have wide sidewalks and proper parking on both sides. And also pulling back from the side streets, Line and Columbus. So, so we start with the public realm. Second, we activate the street level. This is a really important piece of this plan. Very often, because you notice I haven't talked about parking yet, I'm probably 15 minutes into my presentation, I haven't said parking. Usually we start with that. So what, why you're not seeing parking is the plan calls for locating as much parking as possible below grade. So we would actually, and actually the very building that we're in right now has a whole floor beneath us where some of the old printing equipment is. So we know we're on good high land and this is possible here. But if we can do that, then what happens is we have freed up the whole ground floor for retail uses and restaurants and people-oriented uses rather than warehousing vehicles. So that's, I'm extremely excited about that because it really allows the street level to be a totally mixed-use plan. So there would be entry points off the side streets to that underground parking off of Line and Columbus. There will need to be some parking above, it doesn't all fit below, but, but the, the plan is calling to put that parking one level above the street, so the whole ground floor can be totally used. So, so that's what you're seeing here is an active frontage all along King Street with multiple buildings, an active frontage, you know, moving through the public space toward the Low Line, and then an active frontage along the Low Line as well. It allows us to take a lot of the back-of-house services and things that you have to have to make any building work and put them out of sight. So we're, that, from an urban design point of view, really sort of opens up the commitment to making the ground level truly for people and then framing that around that public space. As we, as we looked at that more closely, we looked very specifically and we've been working over these many months now to really define that frontage along King Street to, to create that added public space, to create a proper restored street front without curb cuts and with proper sidewalk materials, working through those details. And then we've also looked carefully at Courier Square as a, as a gathering place, you know, in, in this area, a living room, a living room on Upper King Street. That's a closer look there, you can really see the texture of uses. We see the uses throughout the plan, this is a truly multi-use plan, so it's restaurant and retail uses, residential, hospitality and office use, all, all of the uses that make up a real place. We've also looked at the skyline. We've also looked at the skyline. As much as we spent a lot of time on the ground, working on the ground plane, we also realized part of the community image is the skyline of the city. So, we started to look at how we could sort of capture some of the space back that we would be carving out of the block to create this public space, but put it back in the right places and in meaningful ways, so that you don't have sort of the monolith, which we often see, but you actually have elegant buildings that go up into the skyline and actually down. So, we really looked at crafting the skyline across the whole project. And I'll talk about that a bit more in a minute. So, this is a view also that we had a little fun with at the Charette, really trying to put together what this project is about, which is creating a new public square in Charleston, and then connecting that public square up to King Street. So, it frames around those very important principles. Actually, just to orient you here, with King Street, here you're looking at the peninsula, which is part of that second phase, and then the mixed use in the residential buildings that Gray Star is working on, and then a new alley that goes back into the Cannon Borough, Elliot Borough neighborhood. So, really finding ways to connect this site to everything around it. And then starting to ask questions about the compositions that would be created with the plan, that could lead to that goal of creating the city as a work of art. The jewel box on King Street inviting you into the block. Or maybe you're at the clock tower, looking back toward King Street, and the jewel box sort of encouraging you back to King Street. So, this is really the DNA of this master plan. It's about the public realm. It's about a truly mixed-use project. It's about beautifying the skyline. So, it's sort of urban design, it's the best, it's all our highest goals in urban design brought together, in a very unique opportunity that we have at this point in time. So, we've studied this plan. We've met, I think Miller mentioned, we've met with, I think, 75 people and groups over the last six months. So, everybody that wanted to hear about this, they're going to hear about it. And I appreciate you all coming tonight to hear about it. We've also analyzed it. We've run the numbers. We've studied it. We kind of start, you start with art, and then you say, "Okay, how does that work? Can we make it work?" This was a diagram to look at that public realm. What did we just do? We did what we thought was right, and then we started to measure it up. And what we realized was, out of that 3.7 acres, approximately one acre, one acre becomes public realm, public space in the block. And that's what you're seeing here. And it's a combination of creating that additional space, the public streets that are there now, additional space along the low line, but then, very importantly, all the space in the middle of the block. So, all that together approximates an acre, 40,000 square feet of land that becomes public realm. This is unprecedented, and I'm incredibly excited about that, because that's just, this is something that happens once, as was said, once in a generation. So, we started to look at the skyline, too. We started to ask questions about how to shape that and make that something beautiful. We went back to the old diagrams from the peninsula plan, and this is a cross-section through, all the way from St. Philip Street to Meeting Street. So, I'll just kind of walk through that. This is Meeting Street. These are the new buildings that Gray Star is building there, that come to King Street, which is here. And then if we go to Meeting Street, this is the Gray Star Office Building, and then the Guild there. So, what we realized with that idea of the height on the peninsula cresting to the middle, that there was a natural, there's a natural inclination that if we were to do taller buildings, this is exactly where they ought to be. In fact, if you think about King and Meeting as the spine of the peninsula, and the rail line is in the middle, it is, in fact, the center of the center. So, if there is a place in Charleston, it is right here. And so, we sort of took that idea to mind, that let's work with this idea of crafting open space and crafting a beautiful skyline to bring together a whole planet. So, we studied that quite a bit. And we also started to compare the public space, and some of the conversations, questions would arise, "Well, how big is Courier Square? What is that like? What would I relate that to?" So, we looked at places all over the world, some far afield, some close at home here. But here's a few examples. This is Covent Garden in London. You can see the blue dash lines that are here. It's the footprint of that market space in Covent Garden. Fits sort of neatly on Courier Square. The old Sistern Yard, College of Charleston. Bit larger, and obviously, a very different kind of space, but a place for gathering and a place for ceremonies. Certainly a beloved part of the city fabric. The Place de la Sebore in Paris. An active place with outdoor dining and cafes and restaurants, and a place to meet and gather. This one really struck us, Rockefeller Center in New York. If you look at this, this is the Grand Plaza at Rockefeller Center, and you can see it's a bit bigger, but it fits pretty neatly on Courier Square. And if you follow that between the buildings up, this is Fifth Avenue. You might take that analogy and imagine King Street as Charleston's Fifth Avenue. Very analogous in scale. It also struck me that this, the creation of Rockefeller Center was a big urban block. You know, this did not need to happen. It was an act of partnership, it was an act of will, to create a public space in the city that became and is a beloved public space in Midtown Manhattan. This could have just been filled with buildings like any other block in Midtown Manhattan, but it wasn't. So, obviously, you know, different city, but these comparisons, we thought were really interesting. Some here, some abroad. This is a beautiful market square in Tuscany in the city of Lucca. I'm Italian, and I often get accused of using too many Italian examples, so, and also I use Savannah Square in this example, Troop Square. But anyway, we did this, here's Charleston Place, I'm sorry, Waterfront Park, laid on Courier Square, and bringing it home. Campagollio in Rome framed around a clock tower. So, we had a lot of fun thinking about that, because that's what we're here to make, is a space all of its own for the city, for generations to come. And it starts with carving out space in the block to do it. It starts with those principles of putting all the parking that you can below grade, so you can open up the ground plane and you can do this. And I will say, just as a quick side note, we recently had the good fortune to work on different kind of projects, but similar goals. In Savannah, the Plant Riverside District on the Savannah River was a four-and-a-half-acre private site. And we worked with the city of Savannah, and we worked with the ownership team, and we took out of that four-and-a-half acres, about the same ratio, we ended up with an acre and a half of open space that connected the city to the river and extended the riverwalk for a mile, I'm sorry, quarter of a mile along that frontage. So, we had to do some things to make that happen. We actually had to revisit the height in that area. There were a lot of things we had to do, but we knew we had one chance to get it right. And it proceeded, it took about 10 years to finish the project, but it actually just was recently recognized by the Urban Land Institute with a global award for excellence. So, we're very proud of the project. If you come to Savannah, please let me know. I'd love to show it to you. So, we've been studying the height question. We know height is always a sensitive discussion. We want to do this very carefully and very thoughtfully. One of the things that we learned and sort of taken to heart is that the older tall buildings in Charleston are successful because they are smaller in their footprint. So, we say taller, but smaller, and that's often missing in contemporary development. So, we took our skyline plan that we had studied, and we compared it to some buildings that we admire very much, the Francis Marion Hotel, a 14-story building right on King Street, right, as you know, right up to King Street. That's the footprint of the Francis Marion on top of the one building in our site that we believe should be a 12-story building, be a landmark for a new public space, just as the Francis Marion is for Marion Square, or Sumter Houses, or the People's Building. These become landmarks in important parts of the city. And what we learned was, the building that we're in fact proposing, and I'll show you more detail, is in fact smaller than the Francis Marion. So, that was comforting, and that reassured me that this is the Charleston way of doing a taller building. We couldn't help but take a look at, and this is not to pick on one project or another, but sort of the default method of large format new development is to make the project as big as the site. And so, you know, example of what could, what would naturally or normally happen on a block like this, where everything kind of goes to a uniform heights, just flat, and that's very much, that's sort of, in a way, almost sort of the default way of doing it. So, clearly, we have a group here that does not want to do it the easy way. So, it's about breaking down scale. And so, we started to look at this idea about shaping the skyline, and what emerged was this idea of creating what we're calling micro-height zones, where we're surgically precise when we think about where height should be and where it shouldn't, so that we create a good composition. This is the height map as it is today for this block, sort of one big dumb height zone. It's an eight-story height zone. It has allowable additional story for architectural merit. And then there's a four-story zone that has an allowable half-story for merit on King Street. But that's sort of the default. And usually, what ends up happening is we get buildings that just fill that up. We also noticed that the taller height goes all the way to those side streets, which can often create kind of a jarring effect on the side streets. But our thinking was, so much work has gone into planning this one block, out of, you think about the scale of some redevelopment here in Charleston, this is one block, but we've thought about it so much, we said, "What if we could create a model for how to think about height and think about it in this micro-height zone approach?" So, this is one of the diagrams that we created as we were studying that. And what we realized was, parts of the zone would actually not change at all, what's there today. So, everything that you see in gray on this map, there's no change to what's there today. Everything in blue is actually being reduced. So, this isn't, it's not just adding height, it's actually pushing height down, pushing it down along the side streets, and pushing it down, probably most notably, throughout the middle of the block, sort of putting a river in the block to connect to the clock tower. But then going back and saying, "Where is height appropriate?" You know, along a new space that doesn't exist yet, the low line, a great place for a landmark building there. And then, so we have 12-story, and we have some 10-story, more in the middle of the block, kind of away from the edges. So, that was our, kind of our analysis of that. And we ran the numbers. We sort of did the artwork first, and then we ran the numbers. And we found at a technical level, with all this work and sort of the shaping, we were reducing approximately 400,000 square feet of developable area, and we were returning back 100. So, there was, as you can see, certainly still a net reduction of square footage, about 300,000 square feet, but also the creation of an acre of new public space. So, we felt like we had really an important opportunity to make this plan come to life. So, we've been working with the zoning process. You're going to hear from James Wilson a little bit on some of the mechanical things to bring such a plan to life. But this is a diagram of what a micro-height zone map would look like. Right now, this is just one big height zone, and that's what you're going to get. This is not that at all. So, we've been very specific and very intentional about shaping height to conform to this master plan. And it's really about creating a more diverse and a more complete context. So, that's the map of the world on Upper King Street. And that's what that would look like, that's what that would look like, following the plan and following the mechanisms of the plan. And you can see what's happening up here, even with the early phases of the Courier Square project, that they are, a lot of them are more of a large-format approach. And certainly, buildings around. One thing that struck me was, almost every single time, all the property gets used. There is no extra space, there is no public space. So, what we're, as a group, what we're working toward is unprecedented, to create public realm in a large private block. And so, that's Courier Square, and that's that link to King Street. And then also, you start to see the footprints of individual buildings that define and relate to the streets around them. I will make a note, we do have some parking that will have to be on that upper floor, and our plan is to actually set it into the middle of the block, so that it is essentially not related to any architectural expression, but the buildings in our plan, where that has to be accommodated, are in fact all individual distinct masses with their own integrity and their own design, their own uses, that come to the street. So, we've been really working through that, that whole process. And I'm excited about it. You know, we look at Charleston, I mean, we have to remember, this is King Street, and the exuberance of King Street, and the rhythms, the up-and-down rhythms of King Street is what brings it to life. And the taller buildings are part of that fabric. You know, the Francis Marion, certainly, a stodder, beautiful design reminds us that buildings should meet the ground beautifully and meet the sky beautifully, which this does very, very well. So, we've taken that plan, we've studied it, we've studied the variations that we would imagine on King Street, in the four- and five-story zone. We've held a zone at six stories at the corner, inspired by some of the historical photos of Old King Street. And we started to look at some massing studies to understand, of course, the buildings haven't all been designed yet, but just to understand what this looks like. If we carve this river into the block, that we open up views to the clock tower. And here's the jewel box building that we're imagining on King Street, and bringing buildings down to four stories to kind of open up the block. Or maybe when you're in the middle of the block, looking toward the clock tower over here, there's that view of the clock tower, again, stepping that view down and creating those vistas to those landmark elements. We're looking back toward King Street, imagining the jewel box illuminating that frontage up at King Street. Moving kind of outside of the site, in this particular view, where imagine you're walking down the low line one day in the near future, and you're arriving, you're approaching Courier Square. This is that low-line landmark building that we can imagine, that's there to sort of greet you with its thin frontage facing that public path and clock tower on in the distance. And then even some of those higher views, those vistas from the crosstown, as you're zooming around the corner, looking at the skyline of Charleston, and sort of placing those elements in context. What we actually have found in some of these studies was that the Lifestyle Communities Project actually kind of takes a bit of a front-row seat. We're just beyond that. So, what's in blue is actually not Courier Square, but what's in red, that would be that low-line landmark building. This would be the building up at King Street. So, just remembering, you know, what are going to be those façades that have incredibly high commitment to the public realm. And also approaching, coming up the crosstown here, that corner of King Street and Line Street becomes a really important future building for the city, kind of a gateway as you're coming down King Street. And then when you're on King Street, taking a look at some of those vistas there, this is looking up King Street, and you can see really what we're looking to do is create a variation of five, and four, and three, and four, and five, and six, and getting that up-and-down rhythm that we can observe in the finest blocks of the city. And actually, holding some of those lines as you go down Columbus Street in this example, and setting back the taller masses beyond that, so that you keep the primacy on King Street. This is looking down King Street now, in the other direction, from the other corner. And again, looking at that, sort of a landmark to arrive into the block, and then that up-and-down rhythm as you look down the street, and the jewel box in the middle. So, we've had a lot of fun with this. These are plans based on modeling how those heights would work. Of course, buildings are yet to be designed, but we're looking for compositions that will be beautiful and civic. And that's really, I think that's really our bottom line here, is that this is a, it's a civic opportunity, it's something that we have at this point in time, it's one of those unparalleled opportunities when all of us together have the ability to achieve a new and beautiful part of the city. Thank you all for allowing me to give you a long design presentation. I'm going to ask James Wilson.